I'd like to welcome everyone to the Village Board of Trustees. The meeting on Monday, February 6, 2023, at 7:00 p.m. Can we all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please? My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Will everyone remain standing, please, for all veterans and all those who lost their lives fighting for the freedom we have today? Sit down, please, if you'd like. A roll call vote, please. Trustee Albert.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Corrigan.
Present.
Trustee Hagan.
Present.
Mayor Curly, present. We have upcoming regular media schedule for Monday, March 6, 2023, at 7:00 p.m. And a regular media schedule for Monday, April 3, 2023, at 7:00 p.m. Can I have a motion for approval of the January 9, 2022 Board of Trustees meeting minutes?
Trustee Corrigan.
You mean 23?
Oh, 23.
Twenty-two.
No, 23.
Twenty-three, yes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. I'd like to first, I'd like to call up this young man named Michael Ludwig. If you'd like to come up here, Michael. Michael is going for Eagle Scouts there, and he enhanced Brooklyn Park. He was there working with himself. He did a lot of work for us there, and he cleaned up the park, and he installed five beautiful benches that you could look at the lake with and go over there. So I want to present this to Michael. So this is from the Village of Suffering, office of Mayor Michael Furlie, certificate for not seeing any contributions presented, Michael Ludwig, for enhancing the views in Brooklyn and making enjoyment for village residents through the installation of five park benches, signed by Michael Curly and the Village Board of Trustees, Deputy Mayor Jody Corrigan, Trustee Steve Albert, and Trustee Frank Hagan. Do you want to thank you, Frank? They're all stocked here, very excited, looks beautiful, okay? Here he has some mentors there with him, all Eagle Scouts there ourselves in the audience, and we're very proud. Like I said, you'll like it, beautiful benches, a beautiful, just, you know, it's a beautiful park up there, and I didn't want to say it anymore, but that's, you know, it's a famous park. We actually have more Scouts coming here and more leaders coming here to do more work because they want to do a nice job over there for us and help our community, and we appreciate what they do for us, okay? I'm going to ask, we want to say a few words, but I have a feeling, I don't think I answered. Would you like to say anything? There's not much to say. Well, he did say a few words, I was wrong. Oh, you're back here. We thank you very much again, very much, okay? And all the trustees, want to shake their hands here, okay?
Thank you.
And I'll give him his clap.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Thank you very much, all right? And he works hard, he goes to school, and he's a truck mechanic also. He's a great kid, huh? As Terry mentioned, Terry's much older than me, the founder of the Eagle Scouts, lived on that property, as these gentlemen know, it's a famous piece of property, Mr. Beard. Okay? Terry was, Terry was also an Eagle Scout, too, all right? Now, I'd like to, I'd like to set up a public hearing for amendment for the Village of Suffering standard schedule of fees. This has to do with different fees that we have in the village that are behind the times. One of, one example is, let's say someone is doing work, they move in and they, they do a major renovation on their house, and they're not getting the permits, huh? So after the fact, we go in, we get them, and right now, as it stands, all we do to them is say, "Okay, go get your permit." I think there should be a penalty for them not, a penalty fee for them not following the law, okay? And not doing it, not doing it legally, because it's just not fair to the people who are doing it legally, and when they do it illegally, it costs us more work, more times to go, maybe walls have to be open, and it's about time it got updated, all right? And there's other, there's other fees, too, so we'll have all those hearings next, next month, okay? So I get a motion, please, approving the public hearing for the standard schedule fees. Motion made by Trustee Hagan, second, please.
Second, Trustee Albert.
Second made by Trustee Albert, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Right now, I'd like to make a motion to open up the public hearing for the Community Development Block Grant. Motion, please.
Trustee Corrigan.
Motion made by Trustee Corrigan, second, please.
Second, Trustee Albert.
Second made by Trustee Albert, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Terry, Fred, you can explain this to everyone, please?
Yeah, I'd like to give a little background about the Community Development Block Grant. You've heard me speak about it over the years many times. It's an annual grant, which is federal money that goes to the county, basically the Rockland County Office of Community Development. Then we apply to them for a particular project. The project has to be in a low to moderate income area of the village, and that's via the U.S. Census data, and it's according to Census Track and Block Group. Now, the Village of Suffering has approximately 11,000 residents, and we have seven Census Track and Block Groups within the municipality. Only one of them is the low to moderate income area, okay? And low to moderate income area is defined as our median household income is $87,000 within the, within the village, so 80% of that is about $69,000. So at least 51% of the people within that area, that one Census Track, have to be at the $69,000 level or lower in order for that area to be classified as a low to moderate income. So then we have to find a project for the, for the area, and the way we have to do that is, we have a Citizen Advisory Committee. This is a requirement of the grant, and that's made up of Ernie Bosco, Kathy Van Sico, Francis Click, Teresa Shedler, Charlie Rogers, and then we have advisors, Charles Swicki, myself, and Frank Hagan from, from the board. And we have to come up with an infrastructure project within that area. That area is basically over in the West Ward, as I mentioned at the last meeting, it's from like West Maple Avenue, heading north, through the athletic fields, going up over Orange Avenue, heading towards Route 202, up Chestnut Street, and encompasses Lot B, which is across from the post office, hits Route 202, and goes up to basically right around Park Place. Okay, sort of, sort of like a triangle, going from West Maple Avenue, north, up towards Route 202. And we've done varying projects, we've done like Lot B, last year we did Lot A for repaving. This year, the committee has landed on a project of repaving Ed Fagan Drive. Now, Ed Fagan Drive, you might say, "Hey, where is that?" That is the road that goes through the athletic field from Ramapo Avenue, down the athletic field, to the DPW, okay? It's a McAdam Road, it's about 15 to 20 years old, it's been, the potholes have been filled repeatedly, it's in dire need of being repaired. That road is used extensively by the DPW with heavy equipment, but it's also used by the residents for the athletic fields when they go there. So repaving this road would be a much valued asset to the community, and it would also help prevent any potential incidences, you know, with vehicle damage, people falling and tripping in a pothole, or, or, or an instance, and so we think it'd be something that'd be very worthwhile to do. We had two meetings, the Citizen Advisory Committee, that road is approximately 700 feet long, okay? The estimated cost to repave that road is $150,000. The block grant always looks for a contribution from the municipality for the project, this year we're contributing $10,000 or approximately 7%, okay? So that's basically it right now.
Thank you, Fred, thank you very much. I'd like to make a motion out, to have a motion to approve the Community Development Block Grant. Just, I'm sorry, I apologize. Any more comments? I apologize, we have a, we have a public hearing, I'm wrong. Any comments? Do you have anything to say? Okay. I have a motion to close the public hearing, please.
Trustee Corrigan.
Motion made by Trustee Corrigan, I get a second, please.
Trustee Hagan.
Second made by Trustee Hagan, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Now, can I get a motion to approve the Community Development?
Trustee Corrigan.
Trustee Hagan.
Second by Trustee Hagan, all in favor?
Aye.
That was to approve the resolution?
Motion passes.
That was for the resolution, correct? Okay. Very good, thank you.
Good, very. I just did it now, I'm doing it later, that's all.
Yeah, thank you.
I did it right now. What time they got?
7:15.
7:15. Now, we're going to have another public hearing, is to amend Chapter 244 of the Village Code for Taxation. Can I have a motion, please, open up the public hearing, please?
Motion, Trustee Albert.
Motion made by Trustee Albert, I get a second, please.
Trustee Corrigan.
Second, I have a Trustee Corrigan, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay, anybody would like to say anything about ending Chapter 244 of the Village Code for Taxation?
Jim Janatino, Two Memorial, what taxes are you proposing to amend?
We're going to amend the, there's a tax, there's an old taxation here in the village in reference to probably back when Avon was here and people wanted Avon to build, they thought Avon was going to build bigger, and Avon threatened to leave Suffering and go up to Rela Boulevard, and they, and they didn't, okay? Right now, if a commercial business of that nature comes in, they'll start at a 50% tax, tax decrease right now. We're putting that back to zero, okay? That's what we're doing on that, okay?
So that, that's the main purpose of what you're proposing?
No, we have other, we have two other, on that.
But that pilot ends sometime either this year?
Nothing to do with the pilot, this has nothing to do with the pilot.
There's three, there's three.
There's three things, that's one, I'll go to the next.
Okay.
Because that has nothing to do with the pilot, Jim.
All right.
This has to do with a law that's, that's, that's in our books now, that, that unless you change it, if a big developer comes in, he'd only pay 50, 50 cents on the dollar on his taxes, and I don't think-
So the rate would stay the way Avon was, basically?
No, nothing to do with it.
If you don't change it?
No, I'm not talking about Avon, let's just talk about any property, any commercial property. If I don't change it, then, let's say someone built someone, on, on my piece, on my little piece of lot next door, and I build something, and I do a commercial there, I would come in at 50%, 50 cents on the dollar, and then it would decrease five, then it would increase 5% over 10 years. And I don't, I think it should be 0%. I don't think they should come in while, while you're paying full taxation, everyone else is paying full taxation, they come in at 50%.
No, I agree, I mean, makes sense.
That's the purpose, yeah. It was, it was in our laws, and Terry, I gotta give the credit to Terry Wright, he found it, and-
He was here when it was done, weren't you, Terry?
Yeah, we could have been, I don't know.
If I remember correctly.
Yeah. But I'm doing it, I'm doing it so the burden is not put on the homeowners.
Okay, and what were the other two?
The other two is, I want, we're giving a tax, we're going to follow through, New York State came with a tax thing for the seniors and for the firefighters, huh? And I think the seniors always need help here, and I think the firefighters especially need help, it's important to keep firefighters in our community, huh? And both of them are good causes, and we're, this board is discussing, and we're, we're, well, we'll vote in a minute, but I feel confident that they-
No, those are both good causes, I guess they, the governor finally signed it, huh? She took her sweet time, boy, she made you guys hang. All right, thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Want to start the negative declarations? Any other comments? Let's, Jeremy, if you don't want to sign the fireman thing, we won't. I'll put it on your show, but, okay, good, okay, all right. Be into some other comments, can I have a motion to close the public hearing, please?
Motion, Trustee Corrigan.
Motion made by Trustee Corrigan, I get a second, please?
Second, Trustee Albert.
Second made by Trustee Albert, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
So the, the three local laws that we're dealing with, all are from Chapter 244 of the Village Code, which deal with tax exemptions, but I broke them into three separate local laws, so it'd be more readily understandable. The first one that we need a motion on is the, setting the business investment exemption at 0%. But before we do that, the planner prepared a negative declaration under the State Environmental Quality Review Act. We're doing this really just to be exceptionally conservative, and she analyzed the fact that we're doing this in order to preserve the village's tax base, so the first motion would be to adopt a negative declaration with respect to the business investment exemption local law.
Can I please have a motion to accept the negative declaration resolution, please?
Trustee Corrigan.
Motion made by Trustee Corrigan, I get a second, please?
Trustee Hagan.
Second made by Trustee Hagan, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Okay, and then you would need a motion to adopt the, if that's what you desire. No, that's right. To, to adopt the local law, setting the business investment exemption at 0%.
Can I have a motion to second?
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah. I'm going to do, I'm going to do that with a roll call vote.
Yeah, I would do roll call votes.
I'm going to have a, I'm going to make a, a motion adopting the real property tax exemption, to set it to 0%, business exemption to 0%.
And it's Local Law Number 1 of 2023, there's a resolution to that effect.
Right, 1 of 2023. And can I please have a, a motion, please?
Motion, Trustee Albert.
Motion made by Trustee Albert, seconded by Trustee Hagan, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, can I please have a roll call vote on this? Trustee Albert, please?
Yes.
Trustee Corrigan, please?
Yes.
Trustee Hagan, please?
Yes.
And Mayor Curly votes yes also. Motion pass.
Next, we have a resolution adopting Local Law Number 2 with respect to the real property tax exemption for volunteer firefighters.
Can I have the, the motion for the volunteer firefighters for the tax exemption, please? I have a roll call vote, Trustee Albert?
Yes.
Trustee Corrigan?
Yes.
Trustee Hagan?
Definitely, yes.
And, and Mayor Curly, yes, of course. Motion passes.
Right, and lastly, with respect to the local laws, there's a resolution also adopting Local Law Number 3 of 2023 with respect to the tax exemption for senior citizens.
I have a, now, this law is actually, there's one in place on these, even in the firefighters, but they, they changed certain levels on where they're at and things like that, so a lot of these laws are in place, they just expanded upon them, probably looking at times and inflation and other numbers that are, that factor as time's gone by, so I get a, I want to do a roll call vote, adopting Local Law 3 of 2023 relating to real property tax exemption for senior citizens of Village of Suffering, please? Can I get a motion, please?
Motion, Trustee Albert.
Motion made by Trustee Albert, I get a second, please?
Second, Trustee Corrigan.
Second made by Trustee, can I get a roll call vote? Trustee Albert, please?
Yes.
Trustee Corrigan, please?
Yes.
Trustee Albert, Trustee Hagan, please?
Yes.
And Mayor Curly votes yes. Right, motion passes.
Want me to go on with the other two?
Yeah.
As the board is aware, you received a zone change petition from XTEL, which is seeking to obtain a zoning amendment to create multifamily housing on Washington Avenue. Obviously, the proposal has a long way to go before it even comes on for a public hearing, but with a proposal of this magnitude, in particular, it's subject to the State Environmental Quality Review Act, so it involves many local and state agencies, there's obviously only one that can be the lead agency under the State Environmental Quality Review Act that makes the determinations as far as whether a, an environmental impact statement will be required and the contents thereof. I'm sure there will be an environmental impact statement in this particular instance, particularly because it involves a zone change, it's probably most advisable for the Board of Trustees to be the lead agency. And the way the State Environmental Quality Review Act works is if one agency, the Board of Trustees in this case, thinks it, it should be the lead agency to make those determinations, it adopts a notice of intent to be the lead agency, a notice is sent out to all the other involved agencies, that is, those agencies that have permitting authority, and they have 30 days within which to object, if, as is commonly the case, you don't hear back from anybody else, and after 30 days, the Board of Trustees can just adopt another resolution confirming its status as lead agency. So that's what we want to do tonight. The planner has reviewed, as have I, the zone change papers and so forth, she wants some more particulars before it's sent out, because when the notice of intent to be lead agency is sent out, all the papers have to go to these other agencies as well, so she wants some additional information. So I would suggest that you adopt a resolution tonight determining that the Board of Trustees desires to be the lead agency on this project, and that the notice of intent not be sent out until the planner is satisfied with respect to all of the documents that she is requiring from the applicant.
There's a resolution, so I'd like a motion to clear the Village of Suffering as lead agency in reference to the XTEL project, which is on Washington Avenue in Suffering, New York. Motion, please?
Motion, Trustee Albert.
Motion made by Trustee Albert, second, please?
Second.
Second made by Trustee Hagan. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Okay, and then also related to that, the village has a local law requiring applicants to deposit sums in escrow, so that the review by the planner and any other professional consultants that the village has to engage doesn't come out of the taxpayer's pocket. And so at the beginning of the process, an escrow is, is set, and it can be increased as the process goes along, but the planner has recommended a $10,000 escrow at this point for the XTEL project. Need a resolution to that effect, a motion to that effect, rather.
I have a motion.
Trustee Corrigan.
Setting the consultant escrow fees at $10,000. Motion made by Trustee Corrigan, second, please?
Second, Trustee Albert.
Second by Trustee Albert, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Now, we have the Fire Department, Jeremy?
Good evening, Mayor and Village Board. I just want to extend the thanks on behalf of myself and the members of the Fire Department for passing the tax exemption, it's much appreciated. The only item on the agenda for this evening is a resolution authorizing the posting of the preliminary report for the 2022 LoSa. On the agenda, it reads 2020, I don't know if the resolution-
Okay, can I get a, a motion, motion authorizing, motion authorizing posting of preliminary Suffering Five Department Service of Woke Program, please?
Trustee Corrigan.
Motion made by Trustee Corrigan, I get a second, please?
Trustee Hagan.
Second made by Trustee Hagan, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Anything for me?
No, thank you very much for working in the cold weather, taking care, and still doing it no matter what, and appreciate the service the Five Department is doing.
You're welcome, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Fred, do you have to come up, or we good now?
I think we're good, right?
Police Department, please.
Good evening, Village Board. On the month of January, we responded to 866 calls for service. I just wanted to brief the board on an investigation we recently did, I'm sure you've probably heard about it already, but I just wanted to make sure that the board was aware. We executed a search warrant at a local business this past Thursday. Over the last several weeks, we've been, began receiving information that the Zava Smoke Shop located at 28 Lafayette Avenue was engaged in selling marijuana to both adults and juveniles. Our Detective Bureau initiated an investigation and confirmed this information was accurate. In conjunction with the Rockland County Intelligence Unit and the Rockland County SPCC, which is the Society for Prevention of Cruelty to Children, several undercover operations were conducted resulting in sales of THE to several minors. The second, which was Thursday, we executed a search warrant on that establishment, along with several other state and county enforcement agencies. The search warrant resulted in thousands, multi-thousands of dollars worth of THE products, hallucinogenic mushrooms, and other evidence being seized. In addition to that search warrant, two suspects were arrested and charged with criminal sale of marijuana to both adults and juveniles. I just want to note that the investigation is ongoing, and we expect there may be some additional charges that come out of the investigation. So I just wanted to make sure the board was aware of that, and, you know, thank the other agencies that were involved, and, you know, just let you know that our detectives did a really good job on this.
Thank you very much for that.
Thank you. I just have one agenda item for the board's consideration tonight. I would like to request that the board authorize Detective Michael Corletta to attend the New York State Police Sex Crimes Training and, Sex Crimes Training Seminar, excuse me, to be held at the New York State Police Academy in Albany on March 8th and 9th. There's no cost to attend the seminar, we just need to provide lodging for Detective Corletta, and I do have that funding available in my current training budget.
Thank you, Chief. Okay, I'd like to have a resolution, what do I, Detective Michael Corletta, attend the New York State Sex Crimes Seminar on March 8th to 9th? Motion, please?
Motion, Trustee Albert.
Motion made by Trustee Albert, second, please?
Second, Trustee Corrigan.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, right? Chief, yeah, we appreciate the good police work of getting out there and doing it, and then, and again, too, and these, the police doing a great job in these cold times, too, you know? Not as good as the Fire Department, but you do good, okay?
Thank you.
You never know, they might buy me a beer at the firehouse someday for saying that. You guys don't have a bar, okay?
Yeah, we don't have a bar.
It was a calculated decision I made. Thank you, Chief. Culture and Recreation. Kathy, Culture and Recreation, please.
Good evening, Mayor, good evening, Village Board. Thank you again for giving the certificate to Michael, he did a beautiful job over there at Brooklyn's. If you go visit, you'll see all the work that he put into it with the help of everyone here, so, thank you, it's, it's a great project to come out. One thing that we have coming up, and I have to be a little discreet, as always when we do this, Clifford Theater, we do know the show that we want to put on, Anthony Colar will be our director again, he gets clues out to the schools, he gets school, clues out to the kids, so it's going to be an ongoing social media, you'll start to see Clifford Questions out there, but the date, so you know, the production will be on July 28th and July 29th, that's a Friday and a Saturday, so keep your calendar open for that, we're looking forward to Clifford Theater coming alive in Village Hall again this summer. This Saturday, February 11th, we'll have Kids Yoga at the library, and it will be at 10:00 a.m., if you're interested, you can come on by. The library, who has done outside storytime with us, they gave us some yoga books this past year, and we've been trying to get together to do a Kids Yoga, so we're going to give out the books to all those that attend, and it's over at the center at 10 o'clock on Saturday. And I think that's it.
You need, you need a motion, Kathy, to sign the agreement?
Yeah, we'll sign them, can I get a motion, please, for the mayor to sign the agreement with the attorney's approval, please, for the play, please?
I've reviewed it, and they've made, actually made changes, so.
Terry put some changes in that benefits the village, which was good, so. Can I get a motion, please?
Motion, Trustee-
Motion made by Trustee Hagan, can I get a second, please?
Second, Trustee Corrigan.
Second by Trustee Corrigan, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That's good.
Thank you.
One more thing, Kathy, Kathy called me in the middle of the night, the other night, because she wanted to do a barbecue in February and have like a banana, like a winter fest, so-
Yes.
I'm thinking about it, Kathy, right?
I'm glad you are. I knew, I knew that would be-
Big clock in the morning, right?
I know you needed that light bulb to, to have thought going through.
All right, it might have been a dream of mine, I apologize, okay? About the barbecue, but anyway, so, we'll keep our, we'll keep our thoughts going, because this is a slower time of year for recreation, is it not?
Yes, it is, yes, we get ready-
And I know you don't like being slow, you're a very mobiley person.
We don't, we don't.
All right, so I'm going to help you out.
Thank you, sir. I do appreciate it. I, one thing I wanted to mention, Valentines for veterans, there is a mailbox over at the gazebo, the DPW, you guys did a great job with the decorating over there, it's a beautiful heart, if you see, it's lit up at night, and we're collecting Valentines for veterans, so anyone that can stop off, drop a Valentine- So anyone that could stop off, drop a Valentine, the mailbox is over there. And I think that's it.
Thank you very much.
And I'll start to talk to you about this barbecue, Mayor.
Right. Okay, I have a motion. Open up the public comment period, please.
Motion, Trustee Albert.
Motion made by Trustee Albert. Second, please.
Second, Trustee Corrigan.
Second by Trustee Corrigan. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Motion to close the public hearing. Just kidding. Got to be fast.
Cassie Wooders, 19 Mansfield Place. I just want to tell the board that I had the opportunity to go to the New York State Arborist Convention at the Ground Plaza. I'm interested in learning about trees and the economics of managing them, and hopefully I will be coming back to talk about that another time. But I got there and I saw John Wicks is the president of New York State. So he was running the show. He did a fabulous job. We should all be proud of him. And I really enjoyed it if you're looking for something interesting to do, follow the Arborist Convention.
Thank you very much. We appreciate that. And please stay on top of that and bring us ideas because if we can do things, we can work with you. And Charles Suzerwicky loves that stuff, and Johann does, too. They're very good. The CSEA is very helpful in doing those things. And I mean that, planting trees, things of that nature. So thank you very much.
Are you going to maintain the same threshold for the senior exemption as the town?
Yes.
Yes.
It's 58 something.
Yes, we're doing the same thing, yes.
It's the max.
We're giving the seniors the max, too.
Okay. And also, Xtel, what are they looking, what change in zone are they looking for?
Well, no. What they've been looking for is, they originally came in before I was mayor with approximately 171 or something. Then I think it went to the planning board, and it might have went to 141. Am I correct in saying that? I'm going on my memory here. And I said to them, when I sat down with them, I said, if you don't have two parking spots, I'm not talking to you. They came back with two parking spots. It's approximately 106 units now. I'm not, and so when they came back to me, they said, well, we can't do it with 106. What should we do? I said, go back to Avon and get a better price. And that's what they did, okay?
We used to tell them, we're not here to make you money. We're here to protect the village at the planning boards.
Listen, we're here to protect the village, and they're not going to do it unless they make money. So if I can do both, that's what I'm going to do.
They have to figure a way out.
Right. And they pay their taxes, too. We need the tax money.
Okay. This is a suggestion I gave you way back.
Okay.
If you put more information on.
You told me to get married, but I wasn't in the mood, but go ahead.
If you put more information on these agendas, I would have known it was the Avon property.
Okay.
And if people were interested, maybe they would have came. Now, if you would have put the senior exemption on here, you would have had people sitting in these seats.
Right.
So, you know, you're not doing a service by not telling the public what you're going to discuss at meetings. Years ago, you did away with the workshop meetings.
Right.
And some interested people used to go to that and know what was coming up. But if you don't give them a look at what you're going to do, you're never going to have people sitting here at your meetings.
You think those people would have clapped when I gave it to them?
I think seniors, I think, yeah, they definitely would have. Scott got a standing ovation when he said it.
Right, 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 right. Great. I'll be at the meet, I was planning on coming to meeting next Tuesday and Wednesday, just so you know, Jim. They got special meetings Tuesday and Wednesday, right, as we discussed, Kathy? So I was already planning on coming and talking to them. I like, they like their little home. I like to take care of their home, little home. But thank you, Jim. Any other questions? Okay. I have a motion to close the public hearing, please.
Trustee Corrigan.
Motion made by Trustee Corrigan. Can I get a second?
Oh, wait.
I'm going to do the Chamber of Commerce thing in the mayor's section. Is that your question? Okay, thank you. No problem. All right. All right, motion to close the public hearing, please.
Trustee Corrigan.
Motion made by Trustee Corrigan. Can I get a second, please?
Second, Trustee Albert.
Second made by Trustee Al. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Charles, please.
Mayor, I have 10 items. Would you like me to go through them all?
Yeah, just go through them, and I'll do a consent agenda at the end, Charles.
Okay. Item A, requesting authorization to solicit bids to prepare bid documents for the West Maple Sidewalk and curb project due at the end of business on February 28th, 2023. B, requesting authorization to solicit bids for the Water Department Chemicals with a due date on March 15th, 2023 at 3:00 p.m. Item C, requesting authorization for the mayor to sign the Cornell Cooperative Extension 2023 Stormwater II Education Program Agreement. D, requesting authorization for change order number three for Tam Enterprises, Inc., for the Gosier Hardening of Water Treatment Plant Project in the amount of $11,910.20. Item E, requesting authorization for payment application number 17 for Pittinger &amp; Deutsch Consulting Engineers, PC, for the Gosier Backup Power for Critical Facilities Project in the amount of $430.26. Item F, requesting authorization for payment application number 17 for Pittinger &amp; Deutsch Consulting Engineers, PC, for the Gosier Hardening of Water Treatment Plant Project in the amount Item G, requesting authorization for payment application number nine for Dewberry Engineers for the Gosier Backup Power for Critical Facilities Project in the amount of $4,170.20. Item H, requesting authorization for payment application number nine for Dewberry Engineers for the Gosier Hardening of Water Treatment Plant Project in the amount of $2,739.15. Item I, requesting authorization for payment application number eight for Meale Electric Company for the Gosier Hardening of Water Treatment Plant Project in the amount of $65,075. Item J, requesting authorization for payment application number 11 for Tam Enterprises, Inc., for the Gosier Hardening of Water Treatment Plant Project in the amount of $289,947.1.
Can I please have a motion for consent agenda on items 11A to 11J, please? Motion, please?
Motion.
Motion made by Trustee Hagan. Can I get a second, please?
It doesn't matter.
Second, Trustee Albert.
Second made by Trustee Albert. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, Charles. Trustees, any comments or anything?
I have something. So I spoke about it briefly to the mayor before the meeting, but with the idea that we're adjusting some of the fees and taxes and so forth, you know, for construction. I thought it would be a good idea to have a special discount available on the fees for, say, homeowners that want to make their house more green, for example, by putting in Energy Star windows, things like that, that maybe they could get a discount on the fees that would be associated with obtaining a permit. So I recommended that, and I believe our attorney's going to look into that. So I just wanted to mention that.
Thank you very much, Steve. It's good thinking. There are people in this community that want to see things like that, that we're proactive on things of that nature, energy conservation. So we will look into that. And Terry will look into it legally if we can do it, and we'll look into, if we do do it, how we do it.
Yeah.
That's for everyone. Anyone else?
Trustee Hagan, I agree with former Mayor Giannettino. Robert's got to know a little bit on these agendas and what's going on with the new construction in the whole village. So it's a good idea. And you usually do that, but it's nice that they'll have a better understanding.
I feel I've shared a lot of information with people in this village. As a matter of fact, and every day I answer, every day I answer questions and emails every single day. Today, before the meeting, you came to me and asked me about, some people asked you about the place in Montebello. So I guess it's mayor's time, so I'll jump right in with you now.
Thank you.
And there's a project going on across from the hospital, okay? That hospital is not in the Village of Suffolk. It's approximately 200-unit bed with a memory care unit up top, but that's not our project, all right? It's not ours, but it's, you know, so close by, and many people think it is in the Village of Suffolk, which it's not. Closer down than across from, what is it, up from the telephone building and next to Gitlow, you have a 48-unit apartment building, which is moving pretty quickly, which is good. Down the road, you'll have more taxation, you'll have people walking downtown, and, you know, hopefully more votes will vote for me. Then you'll have, but it's, it's, it's good, right, Jim? So then you have, so it's just good, it's good things for the community, all right? So that's been approved, and that'll go through. We also then have the other one on Washington Avenue going up there. That's a guy named Recon's doing that, a gentleman named Brennan, who actually grew up in Squire's Gate. He's doing that building. That's a 60-unit, Squire's Gate, Lonigan Drive, if anyone, for ones that don't know what Squire's Gate is, the gate, as they called it. He grew up on Lonigan Drive originally, actually, huh? And he's doing, you know, a 60-unit thing there. And then, as we know, Xtel's looking. Xtel is looking, and we'd have to do a zone change for them, but that'd be after public hearings. That'd be after scrutiny, okay? But the main thing where I changed the course in this village, I changed the course on how much parking you have to have. That was a prior mistake, prior to me, huh? And you cannot do it, in my opinion, without two spots, huh? And that's where we, that's where we, whatever. It doesn't really matter. The past is the past, all right? But for the future, we have to go, I'm a believer in this village for its survival. I'm a believer you need more condos, more apartments within walking distance of downtown. Three things happen with that. One, you get more taxation. Two, you get more people walking downtown and uplifting the town. And three, you get more people voting for me. Back again to that, okay? So then if you vote for me, I'll protect the village, okay? So that's how I see this village. That's, if you don't see the village that way, I'll tell you right now, don't vote for me because I believe that is the future of this village. At the same time, at the same time, when people come in to build things and they don't do it right, we have to punish them. We have to. I've actually went around the last couple of weeks and stopped construction jobs on the scene with the building inspector, all right? I've actually, I actually did it because I felt it was, it was important. Some people might say, oh, you shouldn't be doing that. And I disagree. I think I should be doing it. I should know what's going on, and I should, and I should take charge, all right? I also pulled over three cars this week. I'm kidding, chief. I'm kidding, all right?
That was me.
I might run into a fire, Jeremy, but that's different, okay? That's just a fool I am in life, okay? But, so that's how, that's where I see Suffolk is going and where it needs to go. I'm a big believer in doing more community events, keeping the community together. And if I have to, you know, listen, I feel I talk to people out, I put things out there. But if I can put more out there for them, I take suggestions well. And I will, I will give them more information because I want them to care, I want them to know, because I like to know, too. Me and Jim, Mr. Giannettino, we always been, we always knew because we always came here, all right? He was on the bad side of the room, I was on the good side of the room, okay? I'm kidding, Jimmy, I'm kidding. I'm kidding, Mr. Giannettino, okay? I'm kidding, all right? All right, but.
Thank you for explaining.
I just, yeah, but I just want to, like, I just want to, like, I got a letter here from a resident, okay? Because I talked to Johann. It was a resident, they had someone living in their place on Riverside Drive, and they totally financially almost destroyed this person recently, huh? And they had all this garbage and stuff like that, you know what I mean? The lady came in, please help me, and Joe, right there, came through and they all, you know, took care of it. And the lady wrote a nice note to the Department of Public Works. Attention, Danielle Curtin, you know? Danielle works in Nova's with Charles, a very professional young person that works upstairs, I guess his assistant, you might say. She works with Johann well, and unfortunately, she's on, she's in the CSEA, she's a CSEA on the board, so that's not good for me. But otherwise, she's a good person. But, and she said, thank you so much for the cleanup job and Riverside Drive. You, your service is appreciated, you know, Riverside neighbors, all right, 2023. But that's what we get. We get a lot of, we're that community place, and we get a lot of people that, everyone, they might say it, they don't always write the notes, but they're caring, they go out there and they do appreciate the service we all do, okay? Or you all do, maybe, instead of me, okay? But, so I just wanted to put that on record. Like I said, Kathy's working on some crazy stuff in the middle of the night, and I guess, I get, oh, you want to just, the Chamber of Commerce now, we have a Chamber of Commerce here, but I think we have the past president and vice president. You don't have to come up. I'm just going to, I'm going to make a motion because they want to do their street fair on May 7, 2023, from 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., all right? So I'm going to make a motion to do it with the subject to enter into contract with the village acceptable to the village attorney as the form and substance and subject. And also, as we mentioned about the Suffolk Fire Department, if they choose, they can do the car show that day also, okay? Because I think it's great that we can get the Suffolk Fire Department to be part of the community, and also, you know, they have a chance to make a few checkos also, all right? So.
Street Fair, 7, 17.
Yeah, we'll do that, we'll do that one later. We're going to do this first one for a separate, because they're separate contracts, okay? So can I get a motion, please, to approve the street fair for May 7, subject to approval by the village attorney and the, and the, working with the Suffolk Fire Department on the car show?
Motion, Trustee Albert.
Motion made by Trustee Albert. Second, please.
Second, Trustee Corrigan.
Second made by Trustee Corrigan. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Also, I want Bruce Simon, Bruce Simon and actually the CSEA and Johann, they do, another, another, the community foundation, they do a great job with the street cleanup, you know, checklist. It's called Not Just Battery Saturday, okay? And it's back on Saturday, March 11th, from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. So Bruce, would you like to come say a few words quick?
Sure.
All right? And I just want to point out that the CSEA, Johann, I mean, Pat Karate and all, a bunch of other members, they volunteered their time this day, okay? They come there, they volunteered their time, and we're helping, you know, clean up things, society, and it's a good thing to do. Thanks, go ahead, Bruce.
You pretty much said it all. Thanks so much, man. No, I thank you, as always. Thanks to the Village Board for allowing us to do it. I know you haven't taken the vote yet. I know you haven't taken the vote yet, I'm confident that that will happen, but as always, thanks to the, the men at the CSEA and the DPW, because literally, without them, we could not do this, even with your permission. They are, they are the true heart and soul of this. We're just the facilitators of it. As always, anybody who wants to bring down paint cans, medications, household electronics, televisions, I think I said medications, but no sharps, no tires. Let me stress that, no tires. Frank, no tires.
I'm not the tire guy, you know.
Frank, don't rat on anybody, Frank.
I'm sorry.
Don't be rat. I don't like no rats, Frank.